Should I go sit over there by Richard so it doesn't feel like he's a pariah or something?
He might as well.
Alright, I'll come sit my- will Laurie be here? Okay then.
Yeah.
Alright.
She was downtown earlier, she should be on her way in.
No George?
You want to text us?
Sandra, just sit in where George normally sits, but don't move the name tag.
Oh, here comes Sandra.
Yeah.
Oh, there's Marla, okay.
We'll wait a few more minutes to see if anybody else shows up.
Thank you.
That's not Georgia texting, let's see what happens.
Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say if not, I'll do it. You go right ahead.
So I just saw him on Monday, he didn't say anything about not being here.
So there's going to really be two sides, but there would be no rear.
Two fronts.
Right, but it's outside of those two fronts, what would the other two yards be? I'm presuming there would be sides.
Side and rear, so.
I have a policy. So, then there is no front and we're both rear, because there are two fronts, and the side yard is defined as something that's in between the front and the rear.
Corner lot has got two front.
So therefore, there are two rears, because there are no sides, because the side yard is determined other than a front or rear lot. So, the other two.
But yeah.
No, no, it's some of them.
It sounds weird.
Yes.
Like, you have two fronts and two rears, and something.
Yep. That's how some communities do it, other communities.
So there's still two fronts.
Yes. So the.
And that's what we've talked about at the one time, somebody could want to have a accessory structure or something, remember?
It happens a lot, along the corner line.
Right.
So we're gonna go with two fronts, two rears, and straight course.
That's rear.
That's the side property right there.
Yeah, I mean, I liked on here, I guess we should wait for comments, but I like the idea of having a public hearing each time.
If he wants to come out.
Just to give us a little more teeth.
Alright, I have five after seven, why don't we go ahead and get started, and uh.
Good with that.
See who else shows up.
Do we have a quorum? Yeah.
We do.
Okay.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Planning Commission of the Village of Holly to order on July twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, could we have, we'll call, please.
Okanski?
Here.
Christian? Clevon?
Here.
Steele?
Here.
Putts?
Here.
Hayhal? Goldsmith?
Here.
Collis? Kirkshank?
Here.
Alright, thank you. Did anyone call in or notify anybody of anything? Okay. Well, it is summer, I know people are busy, so let's uh, see, keep our eyes open for people. Anyway, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Motion for that, please?
So moved.
Senator? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, approval of the agenda. Alright, looking at the minutes from April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Was there anything that was glaring, sticking out that needed to be amended and/or attention given to? If not, we'd like a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Uh, support.
We have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, approval of the minutes from April twenty-fifth. Could I have a volunteer to read the statement of purpose, please?
Uh, I can read that. The mission of the Holly Village Government is to enhance our community's quality of life. Our organization strives for quality services, responsive action to citizens' requests, and a cost-effective government. We promote citizen participation, proactive decision-making, and environmental quality. Most importantly, we shall always serve the citizens of Holly. The Village of Holly will be a prestigious historical village that is a green residential oasis from the city and center of commerce and activity for the region.
Thank you. We do not have anything in the public hearing tonight, so let's move on to public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward to the microphone and state their name, address, and make any comment they would desire? Alright, seeing no one move forward, moving on, we do not have any old business, so we will move on to new business. The new business on the, our consideration is consideration of reviewing the existing planned unit development, PUD, language, in section one-five-seven point zero-eight-zero through one-five-seven point zero-nine-six. In your package, you had a, a letter that states what was being considered.
Question. Earlier this year, we did stuff on PUD, is that a different section of it, or?
It was the same section that we amended, however, we were doing, we amended different subsections.
Oh, okay. So I, like, is this now the final of it, or are we gonna get it again in two months with another section?
Right, so the thing with zoning is that sometimes we don't realize there's an issue until someone brings it to our attention, or we start getting a project that proposes something different, and then generally, the policy has been that we address it at that moment, or kind of take a note of it, and then if we were ever to go through and do a large zoning ordinance update, or in a large series of amendments, we would take care of it then, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, I can kind of go through the letter and kind of give an explanation why this amendment is being asked for.
Could you get, could you give us an overview of what you're thinking?
Yep, so essentially, some of you may be aware, but there is a potential PUD development that's looking over to be on Saginaw Road, looking at being some type of apartment complex. So essentially, as we were starting to work with them and talk to them, they were having some concerns about some of the setbacks that we had had, and some of the open space, and the issue arises that this is a different kind of look at a PUD district. It's very specific in a lot of nature, where it has specific density requirements put in, it has specific setback requirements that are put in, and generally, if you look at other communities' PUD districts, they don't have that specified, because generally, the Planning Commission during the site plan review process is given the authority to then negotiate at that point in time. Because those standards are specifically specified in this section, just like any other district, they would be required to go to the ZBA and get a variance from those standards. There is no power in here granted that the Planning Commission can waive that. So there is essentially two different avenues we can look at as part of this first issue, or this first concern that staff brought up, as we're talking about a PUD and what, when I, what is read in here and what they actually want it to do. So, the first idea is, is that you would remove those type standards in there, remove them completely, and then indicate that, essentially, that that's an obvious power that the Planning Commission can therefore waive these requirements. The second alternative is to potentially keep those standards there, however, just add a caveat that the Planning Commission can waive these standards or modify the standards. So that way, you still have that baseline that, when you guys originally drafted this language, you can keep within those kind of parameters, but at the same time, applying certain common sense or different precautions towards these different developments. Because as you're aware, PUDs are kind of a different beast, they have some other type of natural feature component, they have some type of density that they're trying to achieve, or redevelopment type project. So adding some of that general flexibility, something generally you see with a PUD, and that's just something that we're looking to open up. The second item that came up was the idea that with the PUD process, as everyone is aware, you go through a rezoning process first with your conceptual plan, and that goes to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, and then goes to the Village Council for a public hearing. So, the potential recommendation from staff, or kind of something food for thought for the Planning Commission, is to see if we want to continue that practice, because it is a little bit of a duplication. You're noticing the exact same people for the public hearing process. In a regular rezoning, it only is a public hearing for the Planning Commission. However, it is not at all unusual to have two hearings at, one at the Planning Commission level, and then the second at the legislative body level, which we are Village Council, because it's a, generally, it's a bigger deal when you do these PUDs, because you don't necessarily have a set setback. You don't have a guaranteed ten-foot setback. That might cause more people to wanna be able to have two times to talk to the different bodies making decisions. Or they couldn't make the first meeting, didn't real, didn't think it would go through, or for whatever reason, then they see that it did, then they can make more of an effort to make it to the Village Council level. So it's, a lot of communities do it to clarify and make sure that they've tried a lot or exhausted the opportunity for public to engage in that discussion, because PUDs are so unique and change per site, and can be very, very dense compared to other districts and the mixture of uses that are allowed. So those are the principal two different ways to do that, so the two options then with that avenue is we can strike out that requirement to do the public hearing at the Village Council level. We do have to keep the requirement for the public hearing at the Planning Commission level, because it is in fact a rezoning. Or we can keep it as-is with the language that is utilized. So is there any other, I guess, questions for me then?
So our decision tonight is to either leave as-is or amend into one of the two options, either removing some of the requirements completely, or putting in a byline of council can, or Planning Commission can waive said requirement.
Right, so there's technically four options, because you have the two different text amendment requests. So the first one, looking just at the zoning district specifications, so setbacks and densities, and then the other one, the process, you're correct.
Okay. And then the highlighted information in these pages here are the ones that we wanna specifically look at and review. Do we want, do we want to amend or remove?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. It feels like we probably should just go through that and discuss each one, right? Am I wrong in thinking that?
I would recommend that, yeah.
Okay.
The, part of this in the PUD, like you say, is the aspect of the rezoning, depending on what they're trying to accomplish through the PUD. So, you know, you, you get into the aspects of the different parts of the zone, their buildings, their heists, and all that fall into play. As far as us looking at possibly just strictly being able to, I guess, orchestrate what we're wanting to see on the fly, within that zone even, is something we have to consider, whether we want to amend this to allow even any future body to have that same right and privilege, you know?
Right.
Because, you know, it, it gives them a lot of authority at that point. And we don't want to, I think, leave things too lax, where just because we want to see development, that we're willing to bend and change everything to get it in here.
Right. No, I agree to that aspect, I mean, we're a little bit unique, the plot sizes are different, they're different shapes, and that may, you know, hinder the developer or not wanting to get involved, just because, you know, just for density for one aspect that says seventy-two hundred square feet, well, if they have a lot size, it's like seventy-one, twenty-five, something like that, you know what I mean? They, they may be deterred from building here or developing here, and I don't wanna see that. I want us to be able to look at and make an educated decision on each individual one, so it seems like, you know, at least me keeping these in here, but I like that byline of Planning Commission is able to waive certain things in the PUD, you know, so that we can discuss this and say, okay, well, it is only seventy-one, twenty-five feet, you know, they're super close to it, let's give them the variance on that one, depending on each situation, but that's just where I'm coming from, at least.
I would agree with that, I like having some kind of standards.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, otherwise, you just get everybody.
Yeah, free from.
Yeah, exactly, and so.
I don't think anybody wants a skyscraper in the middle of town, that kind of thing, so, you know, we wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence, but like I said, if someone's, you know, ninety percent of the way of qualifying to meet one of these requirements, we have the ability to kind of say, yeah, we understand and go from there, so, that's just my two cents.
Now, that height of thirty-five feet, now would that be from the ground to the peak? If there's a peak on it, or would it be just a flat roof? And would that entail maybe three stories instead of two?
It goes right to the apex.
Pardon?
From the ground to the apex.
Okay.
Right to the point.
Then, that could entail three stories, couldn't it?
It could, yeah. I would just purchase the ladder, though, as you remember, so we are capable of reaching that height up to eighty, eighty feet.
Great.
But we're not suggesting putting that in here.
No, yeah, no, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Right, right.
We have the capabilities of getting to that height, though.
Yeah.
Gotcha, yeah, 'cause of downtown requirements, it wasn't higher than thirty feet, obviously, you know, so, okay.
How does the PUD and the master plan coexist? In other words, since the PUD, you're looking at the changing of zoning, okay? But yet, your master plan, with what they want to rezone to have the PUD, doesn't fall within the master plan, and then looking at that, where we have the ability to override that, saying that we'd rather have this development, but yet, we're going against the master plan.
So, and that's slightly different as far as that conversation of doing that rezoning, 'cause you always have the two different ideas that either, one, there was a mistake in the plan, or, two, there was something that changed in which you could not have anticipated, and therefore, would condone that type of action to take place. And in particular, with the future land use map, it doesn't indicate where those PUDs should be. So that's the, the biggest gray area that you have, is that with PUDs, it's not specified in the master plan. And so, therefore, there's a lot of, in my opinion, ability for these PUDs to be several different locations, because it's not clearly identified in the master plan.
Can you explain how that differs from just a spot zoning or a rezoning of a specific area? Like, it, in my mind, it kind of mixes and mingles a little bit, where the clarity isn't there for me, at least, but, you know, and that's just my naivety in planning.
Right, and part of that isn't just, especially with PUDs, 'cause we do have some, and they are put in various areas of the village. It's the intent in which it's behind it is a good portion of that PUD, is that you're not, and then different criteria for your PUD language talks about primary roads, being along those, having different assets associated with it that make it not spot zoning, because you have to meet these qualifications. So therefore, it's not just, oh, we're gonna make this commercial because we want it commercial. It's, it meets these parameters, and therefore qualifies to be in a PUD, 'cause that's similar to all the future land use classifications. They should all have different classifications on what would make it a good location for commercial. And if it meets those parameters, then it makes, then you have justification on why you went that way. Now, if you ask it most commercial, they require to be along a primary road. So you can't put some ice cream shop in the middle of a subdivision, that would be clearly spot zoning, to all of a sudden put commercial in the middle of the subdivision. So that's kind of the rationale behind some of that, and just as a refresher as well to the Planning Commission, we are looking at potentially next year, doing a master plan update. So as you're kind of looking through, and I'm also trying to take notes to remember what, when we're going through that process, what we need to think about, and that's one of the big things to think about in this future land use classification, is where do we want those PUDs, 'cause it should be classified, so then it's an easy distinction of where we're talking about putting these. And it's not a open gray field of maybe anywhere.
Right, for sure. Okay. Okay. So where do we go from here? Do we wanna run down these ones? In the PUD section, one-fifty-seven oh eighty?
So if I, so if I'm understanding the Planning Commission correctly, it's the idea that you wanna keep these standards, when it talks about a density ratio, how much per dwelling unit, like having that baseline of where you want it to be, and it's a matter of have, being comfortable with that flexibility of this body to grant that. That's kind of where we're at, at least with this first part. And this amendment, I would specifically have it apply to item D, which is density, E, which is building height setbacks and floor area, in those sections. So that's excluding when it says permitted uses, or requiring that twenty-five percent of the gross lot area has to be, oh, no, sorry, I'm looking at something else. Or that the fifteen percent of the gross land area has common open area. So, a lot of those different provisions aren't waivable as I would currently see drafting it.
Well, in reality, the, the way we're looking at doing this was allowing the Planning Commission to have the flexibility, okay? So, with changing the language in there to allow that, then the various areas of building height setbacks and that type of thing, the language could stay as is, then we just then would have the flexibility, and that is a guideline of what we originally anticipated versus being set in stone.
Correct.
So, you know, in that regard, it's just a decision of whether we want to allow ourselves to make these variations.
Right. But I agree with that, I just, I was thinking maybe going down by the highlighted ones and discussing that, saying, oh, well, you know, we should actually remove that entire portion, let's just say, density, since we're on the first one. You know, we would have the ability to remove that one completely, but the rest of them, you know, we do have the ability to give some wavering or something like that. Is that correct? That's our, you know, within our power.
Well, no, we'd leave the density and everything in as stated, so that we'd have a, a guide of what it was originally.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's really no need to change any of that, really, correct?
Correct, yep.
You know, unless there's something specific in there that you're thinking should be changed as a, a line that you think is way out of line.
Right, I mean, nothing in here jumps out at me, you know, in reading it before, that should have been an absolute set in stone.
Does everybody understand, you know, really what we're looking at doing?
Yeah, okay. And I guess the other one is the public hearing, right?
That's correct, which is on page five, the last page.
Now, I for one, think it's still a good idea to have both public hearings, from the respect of getting the opportunity, lots of times where if we're making the recommendation for the change, and then word of mouth gets out, that gives in another whole sector of the village to attend then the council meeting for what may have been their neglect to come see us in the first place when we were making our recommendations. Just by leaving it only with us, I don't think gives the public a good chance to really be involved if they so choose.
I'd agree with that, I mean, it does seem like if there's some redundancy, but someone may miss the first one and catch the second one. And I wanna make sure that the residents have ample time to reach out.
Right, yeah, or they could think, there's no way the Planning Commission's gonna, gonna allow that, and then all of a sudden, we decide to do so, and they miss their chance.
'Cause a lot of times, too, a PUD can be a little bit more of a hot-button issue, depending on what types of.
Oh, for sure.
How many, you know, houses you're, or whatever you're planning to throw in there, you know? So, having the two options, I think, is best. And then, now, like, so, does council then have the opportunity, I don't know, of voting that day so it doesn't go another two weeks, months, or whatever, depending on when something, when the public hearing asks, that they could, you know?
Sure.
Act on it at that meeting after the public hearing?
No, because you, you'd still have to give fifteen, well, I mean, you'd still have to give fifteen dates notice for the second public hearing.
No, I know, but if they, if they, when, so the pu, the council has their public hearing, and, okay, nobody comes, then they can vote and say, okay, yeah, we agree with the Planning Commission, you know, or we disagree that the Planning Commission said no, or whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Meaning, meaning we can have the public hearing and vote on it.
And vote on it the same day.
Yeah, same night, yeah.
Yeah, the only.
Which we've been pretty efficient with that, recently, at least.
Yeah, the only thing that really throws the kicker into it is if the council wants to then alter or amend what we recommended, then it has to come back before us.
Yeah, then, yeah, it has to go through the whole thing. But then you don't have to hold a public hearing again, I don't think, do you?
It depends on what they put in there, I would think.
What the changes are, oh.
The change, yeah. Gotcha.
If it's just a minor word change, then I wouldn't think so, but.
Yeah. I, I like the idea of still keeping it, I don't.
Yeah, 'cause it's important to have a base, I mean, a lot of us aren't builders and architects, so we would wanna say, okay, well, we typically want seventy-two hundred square feet, you know, we can adjust it there, so it's a good baseline for us to use as a barometer to see what should be and what, how far we can go, I guess.
And we know if everybody, not everybody can make a Wednesday meeting, not everybody can make a Tuesday meeting, but they can make one or, you know? So, giving options is always a good.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
Sounds good.
And I would think, in my personal opinion, usually when a PUD would come before you, we probably wouldn't vote on it that night, because there would be too much to digest.
Oh, for sure.
Right.
Depending on what it is, like, in this instance, one of the, we're talking about this, you know, potential apartment slash condo unit, or whatever it is, you know, going over there on North Holly, it's, it's a big deal, it's important, we need to talk about it and discuss it, and, you know, that property's been for sale for as long, I've been in middle school when I noticed it was for sale. So, good stuff.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, the consensus by the Planning Commission is to go ahead with the First Amendment, with keeping the original language, adding a caveat to allow the Planning Commission to waive those requirements between D and E, and then not to do anything as far as changing the other language for the public hearing. Alright, if I could have a motion to the effect of initiating a public hearing, showing that text amendment, or if you would like me to come next month with that drafted language, so then you can see and then feel comfortable. or if you would like me to come next month with that drafted language, so then you can see and then feel comfortable doing a public hearing, um, either way, just.
It seems to me I'd just go ahead and make the motion that we do it and then have a public hearing that night, instead of doing repeated meetings over the same topics. So I'll make the motion that we authorize Row, uh, to, um, draft the change in PUD ordinance for one five seven dot oh eight oh in regards to subsection D and E, uh, allowing us to amend or allow changes in that requirement. And schedule a public hearing for the next planning commission meeting?
You authorize a public hearing, yep.
Was that clear enough?
I can ramble again if anyone wants.
All right, can we have roll call, please? Yes.
Christian?
Levin?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Putts?
Yes.
Aho? Goldsmith?
Yes.
Cullis? Cushing?
Yes.
All right, sounds like it's unanimous, so motion passes. All right, now we need to also then make a motion on the, uh, next section that we're not gonna, oh, we're not changing.
You don't need to worry about a motion for not doing anything.
All right. Moving on for reports, ZBA.
Uh, I think Margaret's a ZBA liaison. I, Bob said they didn't meet on Tuesday, so I don't think there's anything prior to that.
Okay.
They had one coming up in August.
Do they? Okay.
No, for a sign variance.
DDA.
I think I'm gonna let Katie have it. I've been going to the meetings, but we haven't met in so long, and so much has happened and new things, so.
Yeah, she's not here.
Oh, she left. Um, gosh, um, the car wash, the property is all ready and up for sale, um, I don't know, we've just been working on a lot of stuff. It's, it's been a lot, and there's four months worth or three months. I can't remember the last time we met. But, um, yeah, I'll have a better report for you.
Sure. Council?
Uh, council, two items I got. Uh, the Waterworks building is back on for demo, uh, in case they decide to change their mind again. Uh, we're currently waiting for the last permit to come through, cuz when we discussed last summer slash fall, uh, that permit expired, so they kinda have to re-up it. You know, it's not a full application process again, so that's part of the issue. And then there's like a ten-day waiting period after we get the approval, and then we can start demo. Uh, at a high level, I think probably end of August, unless something should happen between then. Um, last night we discussed moving forward with a special assessment district, and this is for the properties along Saginaw between Elm and Airport. Uh, so it'd be the building that we purchased for the fire department, all the way through to the, uh, car wash, or not the car wash, the, um, old Joseph Pontiac building there, so that's the stormwater drainage. We're having a, an issue there, and so all the planning. I think we only have like eighteen inch stormwater drains, and we're required to have twenty-four and above. Uh, so we're gonna be putting in a drainage system on the backside, if, if possible, uh, between like the buildings, parking lots, and then the railroad tracks, kind of there. And then it would connect into, um, trying to think of the street name right there. It goes by Dollar General there. What's the one?
Is it Oakland?
What's that?
Is it Oakland? Thomas, okay, so Thomas right there. Is it, it would cook in, it would hook into the Thomas, uh, drain there and then go into the lake. Uh, so that's what, we're beginning that discussion on there. Um, it's a little less costly than we thought initially. Uh, we were thinking around three or four hundred thousand. Now it's on the twos, um, so that's a little bit of savings since it's being separated by linear footage. So, you know, Joseph Pontiac, uh, owners there, and then Dollar General, and then the village, obviously, since we own the old building there, so. Um, the, um, citizens committee, uh, that was researching medical marijuana did a presentation two meetings ago, um, and their reports are up at the office there. Um, trying to think of anything else that we may have missed in the past few weeks. I think that's it.
Okay. Um, then we don't have anybody on Parks Commission?
The thing that they're got cooking is just their, uh, the music in the parks. They wanna keep promoting that. Um, I believe the next one is this Saturday at Crapo Park, where they have a band come out and it's free event, that kinda thing, and it's typically like a bluesy or a, you know, old school rock kinda group out there. Uh, and it's, uh, the turnout's been pretty decent for it, so they wanna keep that going. And then if and when the Waterworks building demo takes place, they're gonna spin up a committee uh, for that park as well to start cementing in plans that we, what we wanna do with that park with the, you know, cuz we're pulling out the turbine and all of the historical markers out of there, and the intent is to display them in some sort of fashion. So whether it's a gazebo or something along those lines. So they'll be spinning that up, I expect shortly.
Sure. Moving on to commissioner and staff comments. Lori, I'll start with you.
Um, Main Street is pretty cool. If you know anybody who wants to volunteer, we've got, um, Maestro, which is like an organization tool, uh, website for like villages like we have, and it, it clocks, um, all the hours for volunteers, what they've done, events that are coming up. It's, it's really, really cool, so, um, anyone who needs volunteers should contact me, and, um, you should encourage others, because I know there's other things going on in the community, and they're saying they need help, but we're the help. So, um, and, or if you know anybody who wants to volunteer, have them contact me, and we'll get them on the list, and we'll, we'll have it rolling and polished up.
Does that include like high school kids looking for National Honor Society hours and stuff?
I have high school kids too, and they are wonderful.
Okay.
I've had them come out and help. They helped for Ladies Night. They helped, um, they had a different, few different events, and they work hard and um, they do a good job, so yeah, they're welcome.
Awesome. I had a few people ask, so I'd like try and direct them, but I didn't know that that's going, so. I'll just default to sending them to you guys then.
I was late tonight because I had them order broom and dustpan, and I was doing the streets for the car wash, so that the streets were clean. And they can go and do that, you know, and they, I have, it's easy access. I can, I do porch pickup with the brooms and dustpan. T-shirts can be picked up on my porch, um, and I live right on Michigan Street, so I'm pretty close.
Awesome.
Richard?
Uh, is there any movement on the plaza that's supposed to go down by the villager restaurant?
We, we have not seen, uh, anything recently come of that. Um, it's, uh, still, it's at a standstill at the moment.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
David?
Nothing from me.
Sandra?
Um, one thing, and Jeremy might have taken care of this already, since I drove by on Thursday when I drove down Elm Street, that, that used car lot, they had lots of cars parked out on the other, and it looked like they were working on some cars in that area that I know we've brought up before, and they weren't supposed to. And I was gonna take pictures tonight, but they've got it all cleaned up now.
Uh, we did ask them to move several cars this past week, uh, so we could trim that tree line along the, uh, south side of the new fire hall. Uh, we didn't wanna damage their cars. Uh, we had, uh, some crews in there working. So I would assume that, and then I know, uh, one eleven Elm, the abandoned building right there, they were also doing some testing back there. So, uh, one day there was several, several cars in that area, um, but they should not be doing any work on cars. So if you do see that, let me know, and we'll, we'll address that immediately.
Yeah, I will. I think it was Friday when I went by, and of course, good, yeah, yeah. Everybody does everything on Friday because you're not here, and they know it. Okay, so, but yeah, I went by tonight, and I was gonna take pictures.
Most popular roof day of the week.
Yeah, exactly. That's it.
All right, um, just a couple items. Typically, after we have the Fourth of July fireworks, uh, and the public comes and enjoys, and then they reacquaint themselves to the, uh, boat launch area and that whole, you know, the park and everything else, then we find that the people decide to use the park there uh, along the lake and beach their boats and swim and stuff out of that area. That's never really not allowed to be done. So, I don't know, would that be something we'd call the police on, or what would be the deal on that?
I don't know the ordinance on that area, to be honest with you. Um, is there, is there signage out there that says?
There used to be, yeah. No swimming at that area. There, you're supposed to use the, you're supposed to use the beach area, you know, the, the village beach or township beach. Along the park there, you're not supposed to use it.
Okay, I'll have to look into that area, cuz I'm not familiar with those ordinances, so.
You know, cuz they basically go zipping in and out of there, and it's really dangerous, you know, cuz there's really nothing there for them to dock or do.
Oakland County Marine Patrol would have the probably highest. I don't know if the village, we have to add a way to get out there to enforce it, first of all. We don't have a boat.
The beach area, true, is, um, township beach instead of the village, so that's something too.
But the park is where they're doing it. They're not doing it in the beach.
Got it.
So they're supposed to be swimming at the beach, not at the park.
You were talking about like along the green river, where the trees are all out and all that, along.
No, right there, right there by where the building is, and they used to be a skateboard area and stuff, that pavilion. They're all just right at that waterfront, just beaching their boats and zipping in and out of there, and pulling skiers in and out of there, and it's like, really? Anyway, that was one thing. Then the other thing is, at the boat launch area, um, the village used to have a garbage fifty-five gallon drum for a garbage can. And I'm assuming during the winter months or whatever, someone decided to push that in, and that's actually sitting submerged about a foot underneath the water, about fifteen, twenty feet out from shore, which is gonna be dangerous if somebody can get their leg or boat or somebody caught in that.
We'll let you know about that tomorrow.
Yeah, for sure.
Anytime you see that stuff, Gary, please refer to call it in. I mean, we're only in a couple sets of eyes, and anytime the public can see that stuff, and where it was, where, you can address it immediately.
Yeah, I tried to move it, and it, it wasn't gonna move for me. So.
I'll let Brian help.
Okay. Other than that, that's all I have, about, uh, over there. Do we have any comments from?
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Okay, Katie?
Um, Holly Days is quickly approaching. Our community celebration, September seventh, eighth, and ninth. Um, so the majority of the events will take, um, place on Saturday, the eighth. But, um, there's a, a group of hard workers that are, um, working on putting together, um, a weekend of independent events all happening throughout the weekend. So, um, uh, starting off Friday night with Jaws being shown on the big screen at Holly Township Beach. That should be a lot of fun. Um, and there'll be a color run in the morning and a parade, and we'll have the tug of war again. There'll be um, music and a street dance and fireworks at night, and so just a big community celebration. So that's coming up. Um, we've been, uh, working hard on that.
Okay. All right. Yes?
Um, we do have, um, two new staff people at Row in the planning department, so they might be shadowing me at one of the meetings, um, just to kind of, if some, for some reason I can't make it to any meetings, it's not like an all of a sudden highly met you for the first time kind of thing. So we hired a graduate planner who will be more in the background. And then we also hired a regular, um, a planner, so he's gonna be taking on his own clients and stuff like that as well, so. Just wanted to let you know, that's all.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to public comments at the end. If there's anybody. No one coming forward? Anybody wanna make a motion for adjournment?
I'm so moved.
Second? All right, Paul Payton?
Hi.
We are adjourned.
Right.